Lancaster County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Let us stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this particular time, we're going to have the public input session where anyone wants to talk or whatever. You can have three minutes to talk. At the end of two minutes, we'll let you know you have one minute remaining. Please be respectful of that. All right. She had talked to him earlier, so I'm going to get you saying. Okay. All right. Yeah, ladies first. Ma'am, come on up to the podium. State your name. Yeah, we need you on the mic so we can record what's being said.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Ethel Frederick. I live down in Weems, Virginia, down the road here. The subject I wanted to talk about tonight is about the Ransons Nursery and the pollution that's coming from there since August the 26th of this year. For some reason, I don't know why, they can't put it out or why he can't be regulated about what he's doing to pollute the community. I retired, moved back home, and we live in a beautiful community down there. And it should be something that could be done about the fact that he is polluting the community. It is radius from where I am on 222 all the way out to Westminster, the retirement center out there, and further down the road in Weems and further up toward Kilmonic. This pollution is going on. And I want to know what this county can do about it to stop it. We have a brand-new school being built there, and with young children are going to be out there. We have ball domas out there for families to come and participate in that. These are outdoor activities. We have the Compass Entertainment Center down there that people are being polluted. People are suffering from headaches because of this. And a lot of people thought that is just seasonal allergies, but it is not. My home, I wake up at 2:00 in the morning, and my home is filled with this toxic smoke. I had to turn off my heating system because it sucks the air in from outside. It covered it up and to use electric heaters just to stay warm, covered up in two and three layers of clothes in my home. And I can't utilize my outdoors, my deck to sit out. I like to sit out and have coffee. So I want to know what the county can do to put a stop to this.
All right. We hear you. We hear you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Next, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Rod Gordon. I live at 64 Cross Road in Irvington in Hills Quarter. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, several months ago, as I'm sure you know, there was a fire nearby at a local nursery and maintenance company, which is located one mile from my home in Hills Quarter. And since the fire, as late as earlier this week, the smoldering embers continue to produce smoke and odor that blankets our entire neighborhood. Some days are better than others. However, for the past two weeks, I have considered wearing a face mask when I go outside because the odor is so intense. The smell of smoke permeated my clothing, my jacket, as if I had been standing downwind from a campfire. And my concern is about the air quality in our neighborhood, especially for our neighbors who suffer from chronic respiratory illnesses. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank Supervisor Lee for your efforts in working with the Department of Environmental Quality by addressing this issue. And I would respectfully request that you and the board seriously consider this matter and take the appropriate actions to encourage all parties involved to mitigate this problem quickly. Thank you very much for listening.
All right. Mr. Lee, you want to make a statement? Okay. Anyone else?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Good evening.
I am Lord Hill, voter in District 4. I live in White Stone, Virginia, but I have property on Weems Road in Weems, Virginia. I rise tonight to speak on what I consider a health hazard in our community, and I'd like to present six points for you to consider. Smoke from ongoing debris burning is drifting into nearby neighborhoods and causing health problems for residents. Community members have reported coughing, headaches, nausea, aggravated asthma, especially among children and seniors. While burning yard waste may be legal in some circumstances, excessive smoke can still violate nuisance or air quality rules. I am suggesting alternatives such as mulching, composting, or hauling debris can reduce smoke and protect community health. The goal here is not to punish the homeowner or to punish the business owners. The goal is to have clean air for our community. No one is claiming that the landscaper attend hall, but intention doesn't erase impact. When one person's action affects the well-being of an entire neighborhood, it becomes a shared problem that requires a reasonable solution. So I am suggesting that the parties get together for a reasonable solution. Continued burning that's drifting all the way to White Stone where I live and this young lady reported all the way up other areas is not a wholesome, healthy environment for us to be living in. So we need to find a solution. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. I saw a hand. I don't know who it is. That's ma'am. All right.
Thank you. Thank you for the time to speak. My name is Joak Waltney. I live at Hills Quarter. This is, oh, thank you. Thank you. This is the same subject, but I just wanted to bring one other thing up. And I also wanted to thank Supervisor Lee and Supervisor Bellows, who have been very responsive to our letters and appeals of this air pollution problem. Here's what I wanted to ask about. When you think about smoke from burning debris in the fall, you know, it has a very pleasant connotation. And yet, this is not really smoke per se. You don't see a haze. You don't see any floating gray mist or anything. It's just that sense that something's gotten into the back of your sinuses or your throat. It's a very noxious kind of smoke. And that's why I wanted to read this. Thank you, Mr. Lee, for sending something from the DEQ to try to explore what their changes are that are coming up to control commercial burnings such as this. And so what it says, the waste types that can be considered are resulting from property maintenance, which is what we see at Hills Quarter in all the housing that's going in, the trees are getting pulled up, and they're going out with Mr. Ransons' trucks. Modification of roads, highways. So this is, again, materials resulting from these other types of projects. Roads, highways, parking areas, railroad tracks, pipelines, power, communication lines, buildings, building areas, sanitation, landfill, any other clearing operation. So, yeah, it's a clearing operation. But it also makes me wonder, what is getting burned? That is a real bad smell. It's not just a smell. It just feels wrong. So I just bring that up. And Mr., I shouldn't say Mr., but the ransom name says nursery. It sounds so benign. But it's also a site management capable of doing hauling, roadwork, et cetera, according to their website. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone online?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Mr. Costello.
Mr. Costello, speak, sir. Mr. Costello. You are up. Okay, unmute your mic.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. As to do with the, Congress got the three presentations and memorandum of understandings. I'd like to know more about the organizations that are going to. Are they nonprofit? And if they are, what are the fees? What are things going on? I could not find anything in the package that you all have put out in accordance with the agenda. And I think that before you decide all these things tonight, we'll sign it off, it needs to get out to the public as to really what is going on and how it's going to be handled and who's responsible for paying for maintenance and future things. Is it going to be the taxpayer? Is there going to be a fee system to use the things? And who's going to govern it? Thank you very much for your time, and I feel sorry for the people in Hills Quarter. They deserve a lot more than this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Costello.
Happy Thanksgiving.
All right. Thank you. Same to you. And I think you stay tuned. You might, you might hear some of those answers coming to you. All right. Anyone else online?
No, sir.
All right. Anyone else in the audience? All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, let me close it. All right. Public input session now closed. Mr. Lee, want to come in on some things?
First of all, I would like to thank all the residents from that area that's being affected by the smoke for coming out and speaking tonight. I want to show you that, that we are working on this problem. Currently, we got the county attorney, the county administration, and the staff. They are looking into our ordinances and regulations that we have on the books now and seeing what we can enforce and looking at maybe adopting some new ones going forward so this don't happen in the future. So we are working closely with DEQ. I had another meeting with them this, this evening, a conference call with them this evening. So we're going to work hand in hand and see what we can get done as soon as possible. And like I said, try to, to come up with what we need to change in our ordinances and regulations to prevent this from, from happening to anybody else and at the same place also. So I want, want to show you that. Thank you.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Do we have Vida with us today, tonight?
No, Mr. Chairman. David Beal and Mike Bryant could not make it tonight. They sent me a written report, which I attached to the electronic agenda earlier this week. They asked that I forward any concerns that you all relay tonight. They will be here at the December 11th meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, what? Because he told me she was at the hospital. What?
I talked to David day before yesterday, and he just said he, he couldn't make it.
Okay.
And Mike, Mike had a previous engagement.
I thought you said something about his wife.
All right. Let's move to our presentations, school constructions, construction and activities. Mr. Pittman?
Feel like a wrestler came into the back room.
He's supposed to run up here.
Yeah, need some smoke or something over there.
Don't say that.
Yeah, don't say that. That's bad. That was a bad joke.
So you want to advance your own slide or you want me to do?
It's fine. Yeah, I just got a few quick slides, give you guys update on where we are. Do like we typically do, go through the trades that are working on site. Just gives you an idea about all, all the things that are taking place, all the different trades that are there. Again, we're averaging about 150 guys on site every day.
Wow, gosh.
I like doing these. These are my monthly update shot. So this was taken in October, late October. Again, it's only been three weeks, but just gives you a kind of a quick update on where we are. If anybody rides back in Hills Quarter, and, you know, you can see the progress a lot better from Old St. John, but things are moving. This is a month ago from the front of the school, and this was taken Tuesday, and it looks a lot different today as the bricklayers are, continue to have good progress. Just a few shots, you know, flying around the, the school. One thing to note on this is the generator pad. It's on the front corner of that, so that's where the generator will go, and all that will be screened off. This is the opposite side of the school, closest to Dream Fields, and you can see some of the work. This didn't show real well in this picture. Wanted to point this out. I was hoping by this point, we'd have everything paved that's grounded on this. It's probably going to be pushed to the first week of December, but we're pushing real hard to get this paved before the cold weather sets in and the plants close down. So elevator installed. I think I had this where it was moving, but it's not going to do it. Just some quick slides on the electrical. This is a distribution box that's in the main electrical room. This is the main switchgear. So we're real close to being able to have power from Dominion energized to the building. These are the gym bleachers. These are currently sitting in the aux gym, so they're there on site. We just got to get the gym floor down so we can get these installed. And this is a shot of the auditorium, just showing that it's framed up and ready for drywall. These are some slides. We were presented with these a few weeks ago by the furniture people, and it gives you a real good idea. What's crazy about these slides is how accurate this will look, you know, as the school's finished. I mean, it'll look exactly like this. And it just gives you an idea about how, how the furniture is going to be laid out and some different options, seating options. It's not like everybody's sitting on cafeteria tables like they currently are. The media center, again, it's a little different than what we currently have. A lot of natural light, mobile furniture. If you notice those bookshelves, they're on casters. And this is our workforce right in this lobby. We've got, again, a new space for the school. It's adjacent to the, to the library and really striving to get our kids, you know, either enlisted, enrolled in school, and moving on to the next part of their life. This is a conference room that's close to the entrance of the school, similar to what we have at the elementary school right now. And again, you can notice these, everything's on casters, easy to move, flip tables, but some real nice furniture. This is the part that I'm most excited about for our students. You can see all the natural light coming in the classroom. The views are going to be incredible. It's a beautiful sight and looking forward to getting, getting kids in there as soon as possible. Any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen? No. No. Not interested. Thank you. All right. Rappahanna Community College, Ms. Thompson. I know she's here. Ms. Thompson?
Hi. It's been a long time since I had a chance to talk to you guys. I want to start off by saying it's been six years that when I first joined RCC's board, and I'm now serving as the vice chair of the board. And there's a lot going on, and you're going to hear and what I'm going to tell you, a lot of words like "we," "our." It's easy to become really invested in the college. So I'll let you know what's going on now. Rappahanna Community College continues to grow. Credit enrollment is up to 8.22% from last fall. The total headcount is 3,698 students. The college is expanding to meet critical workforce needs right here at home. The Warsaw campus will soon break ground for our first new instructional facility since 1978, a health sciences building. This will strengthen our nursing, emergency medical services, and diagnostic medical sonography programs. RCC is the only provider of nursing and DMS programs in the Middle Peninsula and Northern Neck. We're also expanding training in high-demand trades with a new diesel and welding center at our Glenn's campus. This year, the RCC Educational Foundation awarded a record $755,500 in scholarships to 597 students. Every single one of the 180 high school students from our service region who applied received a scholarship. It means fewer students will have to choose between the cost of living and the cost of learning. It also means more students complete their education on time and with less or no debt. 7% of Lancaster High School 2024 graduates enrolled at RCC in fall 2024. 4% of RCC 2024 to 2025 graduates were from Lancaster County. In 2023 to 24, 74 Lancaster students received financial aid totaling $344,381. That's money well spent. RCC is partnering with the county and Turn Dynamics, a machining industry located in the industrial park, to offer machining classes at Turn Dynamics. We're applying for a Go Virginia grant to help with the cost of equipment, and John Bateman, the assistant county administrator, is coordinating the effort. As regards the Kilmonic facility, an additional nursing class has been added to those held at that location. Some of you may be familiar with the Lead River Counties program. Don spoke today at the program at one of the sessions. As a matter of fact, he spoke twice. Can't shut him up after one. The program began in 2012, and the last class, 2019 to 2020, was cut short due to COVID. I was in that class, so we graduated three years later. The classes were held at the Kilmonic facility. We have revitalized the program this year with an increased focus on leadership. This nine-month program is being held at the Kilmonic facility, and with all that the college is focused on with their students, RCC is still providing some administrative support to Lead. I serve as chair of the Lead RC Steering Committee, so I see all that RCC does to support this vital program. In addition, RCC works with the company Pearson Testing, located in the Hampton area, to accommodate testing for certifications. There is various testing for community members. For example, GED testing is done there, TSA testing, medical billing and coding, and pharmacy testing. And these organizations pay for this, so RCC receives some of this money. Also, local and regional organizations and businesses make use of the facility for meetings and seminars. For example, Lancaster Schools department heads hold meetings for their staffs at the facility. The Virginia Department of Education and some realtors have also booked the facility for meetings. And before I get to this last point, I want to read something to you, then I'll tell you why I'm reading it. The Aspen Institute is a global nonprofit organization whose purpose is to ignite human potential, to build understanding, and create new possibilities for a better world. Founded in 1948, the institute drives change through dialogue, leadership, and action to help solve society's greatest challenges. It is headquartered in Washington, DC, and has a campus in Aspen, Colorado, as well as an international network of partners. The Aspen Institute named RCC as one of the 200 institutions eligible to compete for a $1 million prize for community college excellence, the nation's premier recognition of high achievement and performance among two-year colleges. That's out of all two-year colleges in the country. The 200 colleges were selected based on their student outcomes data, including retention, completion, transfer, and bachelor's attainment. Started in 2010, this is the ninth cycle of the Aspen Prize. The winner will be announced in spring 2027. I have here the RCC press release that was put out. It has a lot more information, so I'll leave that with you. So if you want to read up on it, be my guest. Finally, as RCC celebrates 55 years, I repeat, as RCC celebrates 55 years, I want to quote Dr. Kennedy, RCC president, quote, "We are not just looking back. We are building what comes next. More access, more completion, more graduates in high-demand fields, and more partnerships that ensure talent grows locally." That's it. Any questions? Comments?
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much.
Don, here's the press release. Thank you.
All right. Next is Northern Neck Botanical Gardens update. Mr. Dawson.
Hey, Glenn, can you give me PC2?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Gill. My name is Brett Dawson, by the way, District 1. We have a fantastic project to share with you this evening called River Roots Discovery Gardens. I would like to start with a little backstory of how we got here. Several years ago, I was parked at the old King Carter Clubhouse on the old St. John's Road, and I noticed people were walking the area around the lake in Hills Quarter as though the area was a public park. So I decided to walk the site myself, and I was very impressed with what I saw. I found a wonderful lake, very pleasing topography, paved pathways, a bridge and stream. Stormwater, stormwater management system was already in place. There was an irrigation pump house, a deep-water well, and also electric power. I realized the site had all the attributes of a public park, plus it had a great deal of infrastructure already in place. I had one of those lightbulb moments and thought, what a fantastic site for a public garden. I also realized the triway trail runs through the property, and the two projects would greatly complement each other. So I immediately got started on licensing and creating a business for this project. The Northern Neck Botanical Gardens is registered as a not-for-profit corporation with the State Corporation Commission and is registered as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit. The gardens will be named and will be doing business as River Roots Discovery Gardens. The corporation is currently a volunteer-run organization consisting of a board of directors and advisory council that bring the professional experiences, horticultural knowledge, and management experiences to the creation of the garden. I would like to disclose that I am an employee of Lancaster County, and I want it to be known that River Roots Discovery Gardens is a private enterprise, and I will be serving on its board of directors. Public gardens are establishments where plants are grown for display to the public and often for educational and scientific study. River Roots Discovery Gardens will do that, plus provide a place of tranquility and beauty, and will be a never-ending evolution of ideas, growth, and development for everyone to enjoy. Soon after I realized the site's potential, I was made aware the new high school would be located on the same property. That created another flood of ideas inspired by my own family's experiences with the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School through environmental education, dual enrollment courses, and scholarships. The Gardens, like the Governor's School and in collaboration with Lancaster County schools, looks forward to creating educational opportunities for students that will have this amenity in their own backyard. Students will be able to explore many academic disciplines and activities associated with the environmental sciences. And with that, I would like to introduce you to Sarah Monroe. Sarah has many years of, of public garden development, management, and marketing experience and provides us with consulting services. provides us with consulting services. She'll present a PowerPoint and walk through the possibilities we're exploring for the gardens and provide a high-level roadmap of how we'll make this happen. I thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you, Brett, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gill, and members of the board. It's great to be here to share with you a little bit about the developing vision we have for River Roots Discovery Gardens. These gardens will be Northern Neck-rooted gardens dedicated to community, education, and conservation. And so tonight, I want to walk you quickly through a little bit about, more about what this garden could be, how we're proposing to actually make it happen, and wrap up with a few words about what's next. And we're excited to delve into these concepts with you, but I want to be sure to call out upfront that these gardens will also support Lancaster's strategies to ensure sustainable communities. Specifically, River Roots will contribute directly to three strategic areas of focus of Lancaster's 2035 Strategic Plan: younger demographics, improved education, enhanced wellness, and health for retirees. And we can assert that for two main reasons. First, other public gardens, many of them, are doing these very things for their communities today, and we can learn from them, and we will continue to do so. Secondly, we will listen to our community about how to reflect those goals in these gardens. We will root these gardens not just in, but with the community. And so, on to a little bit more about what we're really talking about here. For starters, it will be a beautiful plant place that celebrates our vibrant Northern Neck ecosystems, but so much more. For starters, our vision is flourishing discovery, celebration, and stewardship of our local ecosystems. And we will deliver that vision through our mission to deepen people, place connections that inspire care for nature through community, education, and conservation. So these are just some of the ideas that spring forth from looking at those three main pillars of our mission. And there's many, many things up here, and many ideas, and I'm sure that people in this room could add to that list considerably. But basically, from these main three pillars and these initial ideas that we're thinking of, this has helped us draw up a very rough sketch of a concept plan for what these gardens might look like, and how we can arise a garden from a blank slate like this to a conceptual plan that might look something like this. So let me please walk through, whoops, I'm sorry, walk through some of the things listed on this slide here. First of all, Brett mentioned the school and our proximity to it, which is critical, I think, to our impact that we can have on the community. We're already talking with the school system about how we can collaborate. One of the ideas is the concentric circle sort of to the center-left there, and that's the idea to have an outdoor classroom or amphitheater. Along the water, there's opportunities for a lot of wetland learning opportunities. Another possibility we're talking about is those two people stooped around a plant there toward the bottom, is the idea to have community gardens, and there might be an opportunity for students to grow food. The Hills Quarter community has also expressed interest in community garden plots. Wetland learning could be huge here, as well as wetland boardwalk experiences for all of our visitors. The brown sinuous line you see there is a proposed wetland walk to enable that. And what this will do, it offers great sites for learning labs, research projects, citizen science, as well as other wetland experiences. We've also got, running up from the stream, some riparian woodlands, which is another ecosystem of the Northern Neck that we can celebrate and interpret. We're thinking a little creatively about how we might convert the existing Little Red Pump House into some sort of a center to welcome our visitors. Brett mentioned the Triway Trail, and that really is a win-win. The trail will bring users to our garden, and the garden will enhance those user experiences. And the shoreline, stream, woodland edges, and meadows all represent our diverse Northern Neck ecosystems. And so those are perfect opportunities to create demonstration gardens for homeowners and the types of situations that they might have in their own home gardens. I do want to say something about meadows. This land that has basically reemerged since the golf course was there is, had become sort of a native grassland again. And the sweet spot of a grassland to support grassland birds, which, by the way, are the most threatened of the precipitously declining North American bird populations, but about 20 acres is sort of the sweet spot to support grassland habitat for those birds. While only 10% is left of the huge amount of grasslands and savannas that once blanketed the mid-Atlantic Piedmont and coastal plain areas, they are still, to this day, even with that little left, 36th ranked in the world for biodiversity. And so this is a great chance for us to help restore some of that biodiversity, and an opportunity to be part of important research projects on those grasslands. The other thing about meadows is that they're very chic, and young people love to use rustic sites like that for weddings and other events. So we're really excited about these possibilities. But I do want to reiterate that this is just a preliminary sketch, and what will eventually arise is, as I said before, not just for, but of the community. We'll be focusing on community input in the beginning part of 2026 to ensure that what gets created is something that the community wants and will support, because without that, this garden will not last. Of course, the diverse scope that I just kind of touched on opens up a huge amount of stakeholders who potentially could be attracted to our mission. And I've attempted to capture some of them here. This is by no means exhaustive, but I've shown those mission pillars, some of the folks that might be interested in them, and organizations, and the specifics that might interest them. And this is all a good thing. There's overlap there, there's a lot of potential, and this opens tremendous possibilities for collaboration on programming, funding, and research, and more. So how do we actually make all this happen? Well, it is kind of an overwhelming fire hose of ideas, but the good news is, is getting back to that great community out there, public gardens, that public gardens do this all the time, and it's a very generous community we can learn from. The American Public Gardens Association in particular is a wonderful resource for gardens starting like ours, and we're already drawing on some of those resources. This, for example, is kind of a roadmap of the major phases to creating a public garden. How do we get started? We are obviously in that getting started phase, and the 1A and 1B lists some of the things that we're beginning to embark on now. I did want to draw your attention to a couple things there. The second bullet listed in 1A is the Memorating of Understanding that we are hoping to finalize soon, and I know that you know we're anxious to do that. And this is basically, I think, an opportunity for showing the official county commitment that will make it much easier for us to win commitments from others, whether it's for funding, volunteering, or what have you, and their ability to make those commitments as well. And the culmination of Phase 1 up there will basically be a fully baked concept plan informed by all those things that are listed there. And it's then, that once we've got that concept plan, that we can really begin talking about the business plans that'll support it. And then, of course, the fun part is when we actually start bringing this to life, and we start welcoming people and partners into our mission of building community, education, and conservation. And yes, public gardens really can do all this. From a community perspective, garden transcends age, gardens foster social and environmental sustainability, and they create, and ground gardeners, of course. As far as conservation, nature-centric gardens like we're proposing inspire discovery and care, and we can recreate habitat. To support local economies here, we can participate through the garden with research on plants and practices that sustain agriculture, and through our own practices at the garden and what we can teach home gardeners, we can help keep our local waters clean. Finally, education. Gardens obviously bring unmatched and nature-based learning experiences, in this case, right to the school's backyard. Lifelong learning is another garden specialty, and gardens also partner often on academic and citizen science research. So the thing that really makes Brett and myself so passionate about this is because we truly believe that advancing these goals is vital to ensuring a better future for everyone. But basically, what will really earn the hearts of the community and a lasting commitment to the gardens will be how these gardens make people feel. And every space evokes feelings, and so I just wanted to share with you some of those feelings that might pop up when you're going to these gardens. So we hope, well, first, we hope you like that little taste of what might be, but we hope that however people experience our gardens and our spaces, that we awaken celebration of our cherished land and waterscapes, and a zest for the life that abounds here. So just a quick summary about what's next and some next steps. I've already touched on a few of these items in the roadmap I showed you earlier. Again, we're anxious to get that Memorating of Understanding signed. The other thing I'd like, I'm not going to read through all of these, it's pretty self-explanatory, but I mentioned some first-quarter focus on outreach, and so where you see things about stakeholder outreach and researching context and existing conditions and collaborative design sessions, those are really the next very important step to securing that community input into what gets built. So I want to thank you for your time and your attention and the opportunity to share this, and we would be happy to take any questions.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The county owns the property, but what, this presentation they made to the school board, or they own board?
We have started dialogue with the school board, and, actually, with school staff, and Jessica Davis has been briefed on this as well, and so they are behind this and anxious to collaborate with us.
And how long do you think it will take? You went through five steps.
To go all the way through the five steps, we're talking a few years. I think that one of the things that I hope comes out of community sessions in terms of what could happen and how, is that we can even begin before we start installing and implementing the permanent garden structures, that we can ignite some of these partnerships with some allied organizations, nonprofits, the school, and what have you, to maybe start some pilot projects using different parts of the site. And I don't know what those are yet, but I think there will be some opportunities, hopefully in the next 12 to 18 months, where we can actually start doing some things, even though the garden won't be built yet.
So we're talking about a couple of years?
Yeah, I think a couple of years till we, you'll start seeing things. I mean, this garden will be evolutionary, and it will also depend very much on the kind of support we're able to garner, and how quickly things can happen. But a big part of the master planning process that we will eventually go through is phasing, and that's based on, you know, what the desires are and what the resources are and capacity to execute them.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
I have a quick question. How many acres do you have planned?
It's close to 14.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this presentation and the two presentations that follow propose using the unimproved land behind the new school building. You all have been aware of all three of these proposals for some time, and all three of these organizations have provided draft MOUs to the county, because the county does own the property. The purpose tonight is to just get a general consensus from the board, if you all support these ideas, so that staff and the county attorney can work on revising the MOU, and then at some point in time in the future, at a future meeting, bring you back a final document to consider. So you've heard, you've been aware of this for a while, you've seen the discussion tonight. Is it the general consensus of the board to support this idea?
I'm on board.
I'm on board.
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I need.
We'll start working on it in the morning.
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Palin, I feel so bad that people are standing. We have six chairs up here, and if, you're welcome to come up here and use, we have three chairs over there, I have, we have two here, and we have one next to Don. Now, just because you sat up here doesn't mean that you have to vote. No? Okay.
All right. Okay. All right. The next is the Northern Neck Racquet Association update. Mr. Dew, David Dew.
How do I operate this? Just push this button?
Yes.
Okay.
Steve, I'm gonna stay out of that way.
Steve? Want to? First off, my name is David Dew, District 3, and I want to thank Chairman Palin and supervisors for hearing us, our presentation tonight, and Mr. Gill and town attorney, and everybody for working with us. Our project is going to be located right next to this beautiful botanical garden that's going to be going up. As you all know, we've been advocating for public tennis courts for the county for some time now, because none exist. Currently, right now, we've got North Armwood County, Lancaster County, Christchurch Schools all utilizing Indian Creek Country Club for tennis, which is a private country club. If Indian Creek said, "We're done with schools," we've got three schools that don't have tennis And so, also, before I get into the presentation, our efforts directly align with Project 2035 Conference of Plan, with some solutions being recreational facilities and amenities that attract to our target age group, age-appropriate recreation and lifestyle. And then, in addition, page 79 of the strategic plan identifies tennis and pickleball. So we're trying to make that become a reality. So, let's go ahead and, so we started the Northern Neck Yacht, Northern Neck Recreation Association. We're building something beautiful for the future, for health, for fun, for our community. Our mission, our goal is to create free, welcoming outdoor tennis and pickleball courts for everyone in the Northern Neck community, spaces where neighbors of all ages can come together, stay active, build friendships, and share the joy of play. We believe that access to healthy recreation should be available to all. We'll be working to build spaces, places, that bring people together, spark connection, and strengthen the heart of the community. So if everyone can see the general idea of where the high school's going, then you've got the pond, so wherever we're proposing the six tennis courts and six pickleball courts would be just to the right of the botanical garden proposal, which actually is right off of the Triway Trail, which makes it very convenient there as well. So we have, we started this idea, George, Christopher, and I did. George is the head tennis professional in Indian Creek Yacht and Country Club about a year ago, with identifying the need of what we had here, and then, okay, what do we do next? How do we go forward? So we've been pretty active in our association. We have articles in Corporation issued by the State Corporation Commission. We've got bylaws satisfying IRS requirements adopted. We have already been identified as a 501(c)(3) tax-free exempt organization, their EIN number. In case anybody wants to go ahead and donate money, we're accepting. Our website is under development now. Land allocation, we've been in talk with the county, and I need to thank development now. Land allocation, we've been in talk with the county. And I need to thank the board for your passing the conceptual agreement to this project, allocating the funds at your May 29 meeting to allow Bay Design to even come up with a conceptual plan for us. So, thank you all for that. Property maintenance and management taken over by the county once completion is done of this project. And we are, we'd be working in sync and in partnership with Dream Chasers United, which you'll hear from in two other presentations. So, this is the conceptual design that the board approved for Bay Design to lay out for us. You can see there's three sets of two tennis courts and one bank of six pickleball courts. The reason we separated the two is because there are grant funding opportunities on both the United States Tennis Association, the United States Pickleball Association. And in order to obtain and receive those grants, you can't have a tennis court with pickleball lines painted on it. It's got to be totally separate. So, that's why we've separated the two. Of great importance to us with timing to get the board's acknowledgement and buy-in is that the United States Tennis Association's grant, of which we are potentially able to be awarded a quarter million dollars, the grant funding date, or the application date is November 30. So, we've only got 10 days to get that grant application in, which is why it was imperative for us to come before you all tonight and present. There are also other U.S. Pickleball Association, there's other funding opportunities that are timely too, but the USTA quarter million dollar grant is the most important one. So, fundraising, private outreach to individuals, fundraising events, company sponsors, signage, logos and screening, paver sales. We plan on holding a lot of tournaments in which we can sell banner spaces, kind of similar to dream fields, where businesses can buy a sign, and that'd be up there for a season or for a year. Great way to bring income in and promote local businesses. I talked about the grant opportunities, the foundation grants to the United States Tennis Association, United States Advantage, U.S. Pickleball. And we've also been exploring feasibility of state funding from the Commonwealth. Jim Council has been in touch with legislators locally. We've talked to the governor about this. We've talked to our state delegates about this. Everyone is gung ho. They needed us to get the board's go-ahead approval before we start collecting some serious funds there. Marketing and PR for us. Social media, of course, is number one with Facebook and Instagram. The day you put out a flyer in a post office, a lot of times it gets thrown away, but more people are online. Public relations through press kits, press releases, and community events. Like I said, our website is currently in design now, with our mission and goal will be on there, donation application, our timeline, plans and photos, update for sign-in, and FAQ and contacts. So, this is probably the most important slide of them all, the activities. George started our first tennis team that Lancaster County High School's ever had. And the picture of the guy with the number one behind him, that's my son. And I know this was going to be in here, but I might as well say it. George pulled together, from the bottom left-hand corner photo, a golfer, a wrestler, a pickleball player, non-tennis players at all, and then he pulled together a youth, which I'm going to ask him to speak in a minute. First tennis team ever in Lancaster County history. They won districts, they won regionals, they went to states. Pretty amazing when you consider a sport that we never had before, and thankful to Indian Creek for allowing us to use the courts there. But you can also see, we've got a ladies team. George, throughout his professional career, has been instrumental in running organizations up in the northern Virginia area. He's a huge programmer, USTA certified. He's probably got more certifications than we can sit here and listen to tonight. But we are so fortunate to have George in this area. If it wasn't for his wife, he probably wouldn't be here. George could go anywhere in the world and be an incredible coach. And he's taken some kids from not knowing how to swing a racket to playing at collegiate level and even beyond. So, with this facility, we're going to bring in camps, bring in pickleball tournaments. And we could talk about, you know, big-time tournaments, state tournaments, regional tournaments, which we found out with the golf tournament, the states were held at Hobbs Hole this year, first time in years. That bought in some of the best state high school golf tournament players in the whole state. It bought in revenue with lodging, meals, et cetera. So, there's a huge opportunity here for this. I'd like to ask Logan Brent if he can come forward. Logan, it's pictured in the bottom left-hand corner. Logan started off with George, and I'd like just to, if you all don't mind, have Logan give you a little testimony on what tennis necessarily means to him.
Hello, I am Logan Brent. I'm a sophomore in high school, and this will be my third year on the tennis team and my fifth year playing tennis overall. And I believe that getting these courts built and, you know, giving more opportunities for youth in this area to really thrive and explore more opportunities is very important. And I believe that it's a step to creating a better environment for all young athletes and young students to really excel in this area. And I believe that this program could really do great things, especially if these courts are built. And also, the pickleball is a really, really thriving sport for all age demographics. And like, I go to the Y every once in a while, and I see people who are my age, people younger than me, and people who are 80 years old playing pickleball. And same thing for tennis. And I'm able to go out there and play pickleball once every other week or whatever, and, you know, connect with people my age and, you know, everybody, really. It's really brings the community together, I believe. And also, I believe that you could run tournaments, if we had six courts and get this all built, we can run tournaments, something like every other weekend, and bring kids from, you know, tri-state area and some of the best tennis players from really this side of the country. And I think that would be really good for this area. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Logan.
George, say a couple of words.
All right. I want to thank you for all those accolades, but the bottom line is, we get a handful of kids that come over to Indian Creek from Lancaster High School. I'm missing all the ethnic groups that we need to have. These kids can walk out the back of that school and come and play tennis if we build this. The kids right now have a tough time. There's no busing over there. They're trying to find rides to come into Indian Creek, and they're at a country club. We're missing the point of having every single kid have that opportunity to play this wonderful sport of tennis for a lifetime. I'm not playing football for a lifetime. I can tell you, I did that and I can't do it now, you know. But I can honestly say, the tennis, golf, there's a lot of sports that we can incorporate here because we have this association coming in behind us that's going to even broaden it. But I would love to see not only our kids, but people that just truly can afford a country club membership to play this sport. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would only follow up on a point that David made a few minutes ago about the tournaments and the money that can be generated in our community. I chaired the American Junior Golf Association Tournament this year. We generated just about $400,000 in one week in our community and introduced a lot of people to this wonderful world that we live in here on the Northern Neck. So, I would just piggyback on that comment, just to make sure, you know, there are a lot of tournaments that can be run with tennis and pickleball, especially pickleball now it's become a really popular sport. And there are tournaments, and our plan is to have enough courts, both tennis and pickleball, to be able to draw people in from all over the state and outside of the state for tournaments. And they're going to need places to stay, and they're going to spend money in our community. So, that's all I would share at this point.
All right. So, Mr. Cornwell, you had asked before about timing. The most critical piece for us is getting this grant application in November 30 for the USTA. With all grants come guidelines and timeframes. So, once a grant is awarded, we've got a 12-month window to complete the project. We've already gotten a hard contract from Tennis Courts Incorporated of Tappahannock. They did Westminster, I'm sorry, Rappahannock Community College Courts. They've done courts all over the Mid-Atlantic. They're probably one of the most sought-after tennis court builders. Brackett Vaughn, great friend of mine, he said, you know, wouldn't be a problem at all getting timeframes done when we need to. Again, it's just for us, if we don't get this grant application in by the 30th of November, then we're looking at a quarter million dollar potentially lost until the following year. And those funds come from the U.S. Open. U.S. Open had a huge year this past year, so they've got a bunch of funds allocated for tennis court revitalizations, especially building new courts in areas that are, don't have them currently, in which we serve that area, you know, from North Elmwood, Lancaster. We had the need here. I don't need to sell you all on the need. It's just, we need your buy-in to allow us to continue moving forward, raising funds. Because we're 501(c)(3), we've already got donations in the bank. We've got an account set up. But everyone's kind of waiting for the board to say, "Okay, yeah, we're behind you guys." Then we've already put in the MOU. We'll get that ironed out with Mr. Cornwell, Mr. Gill, and come back to you guys for that. But for us, the main thing was just getting your buy-in to allow us to move forward to apply for this grant because wheels are in motion, and we're going to make this thing happen. And we plan on raising a lot of money. You know, we've got half a million dollars of available grants to us, and we want to take advantage of those and not let those expire. So...
So, I have a question for the county administrator. So, tonight, we're just, you need our consent to develop this land, this piece of land, and two tennis courts. It's not a monetary commitment tonight. It's just a offering of the land.
It's a general consensus of the board to support the Northern Neck Racket Association and allow them to help us make this a reality. They have resources that we currently don't have on staff.
And they would have, and they would be using the court the same as the individual citizens of the county?
Yeah. Correct. We'd be working in conjunction with the school. We've talked to the school board about that.
First priority, school.
Yeah. Yeah. The first priority, of course, is to the school first, but then there's, you know, a limited number of hours that the school can practice and play. But we, this is a county, county deal. So, we're not limiting it to just one group or the other. But we've been in talks with the school board since we came up with this idea probably a year ago. And everyone, again, recognizes the need for it. They just didn't have anybody to step up and say, "Okay, we'll take the torch and we'll make it happen." So...
May I ask a question?
Yes.
I'm a little concerned. I noticed that several jurisdictions across the United States, I think San Diego was the one I heard most recently, are actually considering closing picking, pickleball, pickleball courts because of the noise. I don't know what you've considered about the noise and the lights, because I noticed one of your slides that was going to be lit as it relates to the gardens, which is supposed to be tranquil and relaxing, and how those two things are going to work together if you've got people out there hitting pickleball. Tennis is supposed to be not as noisy as pickleball, but if you have tournaments, I'm sure it will be. I'm a little concerned about the...
Well, we're hopeful that all the beautiful plantings they're going to create, it'll buffer some noise. But George, you had experience with the pickleball.
That's a perfect question because that's going around at all these symposiums and all the meetings I've gone to nationally. I'm a national faculty coach with the USTA, so I travel around the U.S. with some of the top tennis players. But I'm also certified in pickleball, and I've been around some of the top pickleball players in the world. And I've seen a number of buildings in indoor and outdoor created from pickleball and tennis. One of the things that's a liability here is you're talking about the noise. So, now, they have come up with new wind screens that will buffer the noise. They're looking into, and pickleball's looking into this, in buffering the noise of the ball itself. But currently, there's wind screens that we can put up on the pickleball courts that will drive that noise and make it a much pleasant situation. As for the lighting, we've looked at different lighting companies, and one of the nicest ones is actually one of the cheapest ones. And you know, instead of putting lights into the ground, these lights are put across the top of the fence line. They illuminate down, okay? And these lights are so bright down, they don't illuminate out to the counties and stuff. So...
That's something we can probably work on the MOU.
Right.
Because I know that we will want to buffer the noise.
Right.
And the lights.
Yeah.
For the gardens and for any other uses that we might...
Right. And again, those are LEDs. They last much longer. They're much cheaper. And it's not, you know, we're not going to just build poles and have this lighting going all over the place. I imagine, too, over there right now, where the baseball fields with the lighting, and I'm hoping that baseball lighting doesn't impair, you know, a lot of the county.
Football stadium.
Football stadium. Yeah, that's absolutely right. So, also note that this organization we're building is not just about building the tennis courts there. We're about building more tennis players. And there are so many grants that we haven't touched on through the USTA and USA Pickleball. The USTA offers grants for kids that can't, and some of your kids are here that are playing basketball and other sports. Right now, we can start getting grants for you to give you equipment, okay? We will raise money with this organization having there for these kids and children and adults even that can't afford to play. We want everybody in this sport, and it can start tonight.
All right. Any additional questions, comments?
The only thing I was thinking of when Jim was talking, one of the things first, basically, we supported this because we got Bay Design to do what they do. But also, we supporting it the same we supported before we really get the MOU developed. And so, we got to understand that, that we're saying we behind it, but we don't have that, you know...
Yeah, we're fully aware that until the MOU is signed upon, nothing is concrete. For us, again, the crucial part was getting our grant in, knowing that we had support to at least apply for that. And I think the MOU can be worked out.
Yeah.
With Mr. Cornwell, Mr. Gill, and, you know...
So, all you need to do is...
I support it.
Yeah, I do too.
I agree.
Okay.
There'll be a consensus to support this project in going forward, and that should be good enough for your application.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
It's a good project.
Yes. All right. Next, Dead Rise Disc Golf update. Mr. Nichols?
This looks like something I could play.
Am I waiting or start? All right. Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for your time. We are Dead Rise Disc Golf, and we're here to talk about, well, disc golf. So, what is disc golf? Well, it plays very similar to traditional golf, but instead of hitting a ball, a club, hitting a ball with a club into a hole, you throw a disc or a frisbee into a metal basket, as you can see up there. Here's our Dead Rise crew. I'm Marsha Jelinski. Here with me is Davy Nichols, my husband John Jelinski. Rob Pittman is in the house, and so is Justin Burke. So, a little bit about us. We started out as a social distancing COVID project, and what ended up happening is, quite frankly, we got sick and tired of driving an hour, over an hour away in order to play a legitimate disc golf course. So, we decided to build one. Jimmy Carter was gracious enough to allow us to use his land. We were able to raise over $10,000 through GoFundMe to buy baskets and signage, donations from the community, support from local businesses. We were able to design and develop Dead Rise Disc Golf, which opened in June 2022. Our goal is we want to provide a course that is free, family-friendly, and great, and... Our goal is we want to provide a course that is free, family-friendly, and great introduction for beginner players, along with a fun challenge for more experienced players. Since opening in June 2022, we've maintained a four-star rating at our current course. This is according to UDisc, which is a popular disc scoring app. Not everybody uses the app, so, and not everybody always records all their rounds on it. We've had people from all over come to our disc golf course. A lot of times, they're visiting family, and they get excited that there's actually something to do for them here. We've hosted many tournaments, actually six tournaments in all, to much success and a ton of fun. So why does the county want disc golf? Well, we are an inexpensive public amenity that is totally compatible with the other proposed uses we've heard tonight. We've also already done this once, and we're ready to put the blood, sweat, and tears to do it again. We did the work. We put the time in. We are willing to make that happen to keep this. It also fits with the Lancaster 2035 strategy of promoting a healthy lifestyle, style suitable for all ages. Disc golf is incredibly accessible to every age, from my toddler goes out there with me and my husband all the time and loves to roll around and run around, and sometimes throw a disc, to people who are older that maybe traditional sports are no longer accessible. Disc golf is easy on the joints. And if you're looking to bring families into the area, at our most recent tournament, we actually had a gentleman come up to us and say that he had played in one of our captain's classic tournaments, and that him and his wife had had so much fun that they packed up their bags in Richmond and bought a house in the area 18 days later. Yes. And so, you know, you're talking about, people want something to do here, and so disc golf fulfills that need. So we talked about the growth, the growth of the sport. The sport is growing exponentially. COVID really knocked it out. But you can also see from the map that Dead Rise there in the middle is an oasis in the middle of a disc golf desert. The closest courses are Williamsburg, Richmond, Newport News. So you're driving a full hour to go somewhere. So if you want to bring people here, we don't have anything, we don't have disc golf here. So why are we here tonight? Well, unfortunately, our current course is closing due to future development. So we are asking the county that we can use the remainder of the land that's being discussed tonight and for county support. We also, Jimmy Carter has agreed to allow us to use some of the property that is adjacent to the county property in discussion. And again, we're ready to rock and roll. I mean, I almost joke that we should have the chainsaws in the back of the truck. So here's a map of the area that we're discussing, and yellow is the county property, and pink is the property that Jimmy Carter is willing to allow us to use to expand our course. So what do we need from the county to make this happen? Well, we would like access to the county property in order to relocate our course via the MOU that has been presented. We would also like to enter into a public-private internship, so that we can build and maintain this course, and we are supported by the county to keep it happening. We would like some assistance with course development and ongoing maintenance, you know, grass cutting, brush control, those things. It's not a lot, but it does get to be a lot when it's just us doing everything. I like to keep it short and sweet, so, any questions?
How many acres do you need?
So for a full 18-disc golf course, the PDGA recommends anywhere between 15, sorry?
People in virtual land can't hear you.
Yep, sorry. So according to the PDGA, a full 18-hole disc golf course requires anywhere from 15 to 20 acres. Roughly, it's about an acre a hole. With that being said, our current course is on about 22 acres, and it's built on the old driving range, so it's a lot more open. However, if it's a wooded course, you can kind of condense it down and make it a little bit smaller. So you don't need as quite as much acreage.
And how much has Jimmy Carter agreed to let you use in acres?
I have no idea.
It's about like nine acres.
About nine acres.
So you probably need another 10 acres.
Eight to 10.
10 acres.
Yeah, eight to 10.
County?
Yes.
We got a lot of uses that want to.
Yeah. The nice thing about disc golf, though, is it blends in. We're not taking up a chunk of space, because it's just like golf, where the hole will be extended. So you can throw around objects, you can throw around trees, not necessarily through them.
I used to play a variation of that in the streets of downtown Raleigh. It was fun.
Yes, object golf. Absolutely. It's how it started.
Don, would this be the end of our property?
This would be the end of the property, because this would also be, they would utilize adjacent unimproved property in the Hills Quarter subdivision. And Carter Financial has given them the green light to use that adjacent unimproved property.
Nine acres.
Yeah.
So it looked like a botanical garden is sandwiched between these two entities?
No, actually, the botanical gardens are adjacent to the pond.
Yeah.
And then the next entity would be the tennis courts and pickleball courts. And and then part of that area would be in yellow in the handout that I handed to you. It was supposed to be on the electronic agenda, and I just found out tonight that it was not attached. So that's why I handed that to you. But you can see the yellow highlighted on the handout that I gave you, and the green highlights within the red area, which is Carter Financial property, would be utilized by the disc golf folks. And I'm speaking about the handout that I handed to you, not not what's on the screen.
Okay, the green.
One of the things we're going to have to work out with the MOUs is who's on first and who's on second, and what area each of them get, and if they overlap.
Yeah.
And the noise and the light.
Yeah, and that was really the.
Play at night?
So technically, disc golf can be played at night, but there's a light that just goes on the basket, and that's all it is. It points down into the basket. You don't need lights to see, because the discs glow in the dark. You hit them with a black light, and they glow in the dark.
But you got to have someplace to stand.
The tee pads will be built. I mean, it's just a traditional disc golf course. I mean, you'll have a teapot or a launch pad, as they call it, and then you'll have the basket at whatever distance destination.
You'll have a ground light.
And a flashlight.
Typically, disc golf is played during the day. It's usually a sunup to sundown kind of sport. If you play at night, you're kind of playing at your own risk. It's no extralighting from us or anything.
Is this considered one of our parks that closes at?
Don, develop.
Yeah, we could. I mean, all of that could be in the MOU, addressed in the MOU. Yeah. I mean, and, you know, the purpose of bringing all of these entities here tonight was to show that, you know, all of all of these entities have talked. They they know that they can make use of this area. And and, you know, it makes use of the area for the county. Otherwise, we'd have to just mow it.
So the trees are happy with the pickleballers, and the pickleballers are happy with the frisbees, I assume? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah.
You can bank those off trees. I know that.
You, absolutely.
And all of those trees.
Yeah.
Any additional questions or comments?
And again, it's the same question to the board. Is this something that the board supports so that, you know, these folks can keep moving?
We've not really talked about any funding or anything, funding or anything like that.
No, no. And in one of the slides, it said that they would ask for support. I don't know specifically what that means. I know you said a little maintenance, grass cutting or whatnot, but.
Is that what you mean by support?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, not financial.
I don't, we've, in the course we have now, we did it all by ourselves. Raised the money, we cut the grass. We literally have a little John Deere tractor. We drive around 20 acres, and it's our fifth mower we've been through. So we're just asking, like, if you're going to cut the grass around the tennis courts, maybe you could help us cut the grass on some of the course, like using some of the equipment, maybe personnel, maybe not. But that's what I mean by support, not necessarily financial support.
And this would look, we would have a contract for a certain period of time.
It'd be in the MOU.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the things we'll have to discuss with all these projects is if the county were to decide later to do something with the property that they're using, what's the term of the MOU?
Yeah. Because, I mean, at some point in time, maybe down the road, we may need another school building back there. So who knows? You know, that's that's a decision for a future board and a future county administrator and a future county attorney.
All right, I'm on board with this.
I'm on board, too. I want to see how good you are. Land it right here. Yeah, you get all the funding.
Thank you. All right. Next one is Dream Chasers.
Did you support it?
What? Okay. Dream Chasers.
How many acres you want?
Oh, about 1,000 will do.
I know that.
All right. Well, it is great to be here tonight. And you know what was so gratifying? To see the 2035 plan being used.
Yes.
And I was I was telling Ernest before I got here, and Rob is going to do this presentation with me, that I have not been as excited about some things going on in this county since January of 2024, when you guys adopted the 2035 plan. Because we've been in the implementation phase right now, and lots of things are happening in the county, thanks to your approval. And we really appreciate this.
We blamed you for that.
Yeah, you can blame me. And now, we have a presentation here, come on up, Rob, that's going to tie a lot of this stuff that you've heard together. And it's really, really exciting. And I'm just sort of advisor to the group. And we've put this together, and I'm delighted for Rob and I to present it to you. The name the group came up with is Dream Chasers United, and when you see the scope of it, you'll know there's a lot of dreams being chased. So the purpose is to provide county residents with the ability to achieve a healthy, and listen to this, cultured lifestyle, because we're a lot more than athletics here, even though the background slide shows athletics. A gathering place for athletics, exchanging ideas and talents. And Rob's going to talk a little bit about the mission, because she's a little passionate about it.
So the mission is to provide a safe, affordable, and inclusive activities for all county residents. This is, it's an all-encompassing idea that goes beyond just athletics. It definitely will, whether it's an artistic interest, music, sports, this is a place that will foster that love for that interest. And I think it goes beyond just a recreational facility. You know, I think it's a transformational opportunity for this county. You know, it's, I'm excited about it.
Yes, transformational. Remember that word, guys. Dream Chasers United, so what is it? It's a proposed 501(c)(3). Unlike the presentations you've heard before, we sort of want to know how you guys feel before we go through the work to do it. So it's proposed to be an umbrella organization with multiple centers of activity. Now, when I say an umbrella organization, it has a couple of meanings to me. If existing 501(c) wants to partner with us, we can sign a contractor and MOU for services that we'll provide. If it's unincorporated and they need funding to be able to use our 501(c)(3) to create the funding vehicle for them, so that we can accept, under this multiple, this multiple-layered organization, different types of organizations with organizational interests, whether incorporated, not incorporated, nonprofit, or just organizations that want to get started. And we we talked, you've talked about the the Racket Center, you've talked about Lancaster Disc Golf. So I want to concentrate on that first one there, the Lancaster County Athletic and Cultural Center, also known as the Old High School. Okay? So this this is our proposal. Rob's going to talk about some of the sports side of this.
Yeah, so two of the core groups we're looking at are adult sports enthusiasts and junior athletes. In the adult section, I mean, softball, soccer, volleyball, disc golf, basketball. I mean, you can read, everybody can read the list. Before I read the children's, though, you know, part of the inspiration was Dwayne Penn, I guess, last March, started an AAU program, sent out a couple messages. He had seven teams within a couple weeks in that gym practicing. Every team had probably 10 to 12 players. So I don't know how all this works, but if you are here as part of a Dream Chaser, can you stand up? Parents, kids, families?
Yeah.
Yeah. So watching.
Yes. That's the 2035 plan, by the way. Exciting times.
So watching Penn coach these kids, you know, coming together over a common goal. We took a group all the way to Myrtle Beach last year and finished second in a national tournament. And seeing those kids come together over a common goal. Most people thought we were from DC or a larger city. They were pretty surprised that we came from a rural area. And it was kind of my motivation to approach Paul and some others about this idea, because it shouldn't be just limited to basketball. You know, I know football would greatly benefit from this. Me as a soccer coach, I've coached for nine years, and unless a kid hopped a fence into the high school or the primary school, which you should not encourage, there's nowhere to practice. So it's very hard to build certain programs. But I think, in addition to the sports offered, you are, you've got a room of certified credential, probably, I don't want to age anybody, but over 100 years of experience in coaching. And that small group training, one-on-one training, all these opportunities go beyond just sports that are listed on this.
So take a look at that football. We don't have any youth football leagues in Lancaster County, so there's no training going into a high school for high school athletics. And I will also reference the 2035 plan, page 79, too, where we did focus groups, some during COVID, and remember what we said in those focus group meetings. A lot of folks came into the county temporarily, and what do you like about the county? What do you don't like about the county? What do we need to do to get you to stay here? And almost universally, recreation, arts, culture came up in the discussion. And so when you see, reference the strategic plan that we adopted, it's, this is much more comprehensive than that. And so we have an arts and music side, too, for adults and children. And we were talking to the Rappahannock Art League today and the Rappahannock Foundation for the Arts. And here's some of the things that they would endorse and and would be part of this organization. Having a painting studio that took care of multimedia types of painting, together with photography as an art. Sculpture, pottery, and you know, the Rappahannock Art League is now creating a pottery, two kilns and three places for people to make pottery, along with an educational center. Performing arts, dance studios, drama, theater, things that we're not offering, both to children and adults. A music hall, we have a band room there, a music hall where we can have instrument lessons, an incubator for forming bands and vocal groups, a practice hall for existing choirs, choir groups, bands, orchestras. And so, as I said before, it's a lot more than athletics. It's a multifaceted organization. And the Lancaster Athletic and Cultural Center, Old High School, we envision being able to use parts of that for classroom space, for some of the programs that we're talking about, the gymnasium, the band room, the athletic fields, and the lockers. Okay? Disc golf, they've talked about county land. To me, if I was going to create a new disc golf course, I would want all the land owned by the county in an MOU to operate it, so that we don't, they don't have the rug pulled out of them again if a private developer wants to develop the land. But that's. But that's something to consider going forward. The Northern Eck Rocket Center, land is designated by the county. So, the 2035 Plan also talks about public-private collaboration. And so this is a classic example of how it can be done. With the county providing the use of the facilities, with an annual lease rate that's nominal, the county maintain all the facilities and athletic fields, and the county providing the utilities, sort of piggybacking on to what was said about disc golf. But what we would do in Dream Chasers United is form the 501(c)(3), raise funds for all the programs, the equipment, the salaries, the personnel costs, and the financial assistance for residents that can't afford a program fee. And our liaison to the county would be the executive director, that would interface directly with whoever Don designates. The funding, we'd see community funding through fundraising activities, grants from local and regional foundations, collaborations with existing sports, music, arts groups, which I've already mentioned, that are on board with us, and from existing program revenue I would propose a corporate board structure that included any participating organization with Dream Chasers United would have two seats on the board, and at least two members-at-large that represent the community's interest and not tied to one of our groups. We tried to do as much centralized fundraising as possible, with each affiliate group providing input to a dedicated development director as to what their needs are. And of course, input as to if they have sources of funding, we would want to know that, that cooperation, if we're contracted to help develop funds for them. And each affiliated organization has its own board and establishes its own program activity, to keep the independence of each group. Of course, Dream Chasers would be principally in charge of all the programming that was at the Old High School. Proposed initial staffing would definitely need an executive director, definitely a dedicated development director and activities directors, and of course, what this county is very supportive of as residents is volunteerism. And you remember, one of the features of the 25, 2035 Plan is a county where volunteerism remains abundant. And so other features, no one will be left behind. I would propose that we establish a scholarship fund to provide program revenue for anyone who can't afford it, for any economic reason whatsoever. And the facility would be open to all non-county residents, but at a higher fee schedule. So that is sort of where we stand with it and our concept. And so I'd like, it sort of would work as an overarching parks and recreation group that many counties have. And this is not a unique situation, some counties around Richmond, like Henrico, have a similar type of structure.
So, Don, is this taking the place of our proposed parks and director?
Yes. This would be taking the place of that position with a much more expanded breadth and view.
So, one question is, so, so Dream Chasers is the, is the, is the head of this all? And then you have directors of each sport that's reporting to Dream Chasers, and they're scheduling when they have the gym and when they use the building?
Well, not exactly.
Okay.
So if, if, if this golf was an affiliate of ours.
Okay.
Right? They would do their own programming, they'd have their own board, they'd have two seats on the corporate board. But they would take care of all that. We would, and if they contracted for us to do some fundraising activities for them, we would try to work that out. If it's programming in the old gym, the high school, then whoever the program director is would work with the other coaches or other, other individuals who may work on a part-time basis or a volunteer basis to accomplish that. But Dream Chasers would definitely have the controlling interest of the old high school and athletic fields around it.
Well, Don, have you, have you spoken about our wish to have county offices move in there?
Yeah, we talked a little bit about that, you know, and we met, John Bateman and I met with these folks, I guess, a week or so ago.
Last week.
And, you know, with so much energy in that room at that meeting, I thought we had to get them in front of the board at this early stage to gauge how the board felt about this. And also, to, when we had Guernsey Tingle go through the high school, to try to come up with a concept plan of how all of these things fit there. You know, if the board wishes to go down this road, then, then they would need to know that as well. Obviously, obviously, the gym, the football field, you know, the locker rooms and things, we would not use them for county administration offices. You know, we would use the classroom area, the library, and the administration offices. So, you know, I guess tonight, the main thing is, again, is this something that the board sees as possible? And do we include this when we, you know, have Guernsey Tingle try to put that concept plan together for us?
I think this is an excellent idea myself. It expands far, farther than what we were thinking about doing. And we got community help to do it, so.
Yeah.
I'm behind it, and as far as the space in the old high school, I think that can be worked out, as long as we know what, upfront, what's coming in.
I think, you know, it's a good idea. We was going to have to maintain that building anyhow.
Exactly.
You know, the expenses, because we was going to move part of our offices in there, plus, you know, we just got to maintain the building, because we had no plan to get rid of it.
That's right.
You know, we was going to reuse it, so I think, I think it's something that we can, we could get behind.
Isn't a school set up in a quad? Can it be basically four separate units in there?
Sure, it could.
Barge units, yeah, separate from each other.
The other alternative for the county is to do a Parks and Recreation Authority, but of course, it would then carry the expense of, of that authority. Also, I can tell you from experience that the first time Recreation Authority directors don't last very long, because they get.
Get burned out.
Yeah, but not only that, but groups who have had traditional uses do not like someone coming in and telling them what to do. So, usually takes two or three directors before you get it worked out. You know, I think this is something that can work, if, if the, just like the other MOUs, they're going to have to be thought out, they're going to have to be planned out, and they're going to have to be something that each side can live with, but they're going to have to be flexible in as things change. Because, you know, we don't know what will happen five years from now, or 10 years from now, and what the county's needs are going to be, and just like in all the MOUs, we're going to have to consider the county's needs first. But we can, we can take a shot at it. You know, my last one was a 50-year agreement and tried to put everything we could do. So now we're trying to do a little longer range, probably.
Well, definitely, Jim, I feel like this, this is a county need. And it brings a lot of groups together, and you can tell by the audience here tonight, when the board was supposed to have a light agenda, and the room is heating up, because there's so many bodies in here in support of, of something like this. We never had a light agenda. Hey, Don Gill told me you had a light agenda.
I just want everybody to understand that when you do an MOU with the county, it has to remain flexible on the county's part, because we don't know what the county's needs are going to be one year, two years, 10 years, 20 years from now. And I don't want someone to think that there's going to be something in an MOU that's going to guarantee them use of county property forever, because that's not going to be true.
Yeah.
It'll be used for, the MOU will last as long as the county wants it to last. So, just so we have an understanding there, because when I send that MOU back, and I appreciate the board supervisors giving me a lot of work to do, but when I send that MOU back and you say, wait a minute, the county can pull out of this upon sufficient notice, it's going to be in there, so we'll, we'll work through it.
But it would have to be for a reason that is.
Yeah. And with notice. Because you know, counties then will do anything fast.
I don't know, I think we move pretty fast.
All right, gentlemen. We got a consensus.
Yes.
All right, good.
Thank you, guys. Great day.
This took a lot of time, but I think it's very productive.
Yeah. Well, it's a change of life.
Yes.
It will change the life of the citizens of the county.
You know, cornhole is a sport.
We'll put it in the presentation for next time.
Only at Virginia Tech.
No, no, we have, we have more. Yeah, yeah.
Not at this meeting, but the next meeting, you can speak to a public input. We've got several action items.
Yeah, I just want to give our two cents.
I'd like to let you know, we're still, we're still in meeting, so y'all can leave quietly, please.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you all.
All right. Usually we have, at this particular time, public hearing, but this particular time, we don't have a public hearing on a docket. All right, so we're going to move on to a consensus docket, but we're going to handle that differently this, this, this month, other than what we've been handling in the past.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, on out.
Let me, let me, first of all, with the consensus docket, we're going to prove, prove them individually. So the minutes for the October 30th meeting, do I have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passed, approved the minutes. Then we have the resolution. Mr. Lee?
Mr. Chairman, we have a resolution, and it reads as follows, a resolution adopted by Lancaster County Board of Supervisors honoring Sharon Baptist Church on the occasion of its 127th anniversary celebration. Whereas Sharon Baptist Church was organized in 1898 by Frank Wright, Eliza Blackwell, Walker B. Bird, Mariah Blackwell, John Blackwell, George Fisher, Jesse Park, Edman Gaskins, Herman Gaskins, William Jones, and Moses Waddes. And whereas the Reverend Levi Reese Ball passed up the Caver Baptist Church in Kimmahanna, Virginia, was, was the organizing minister. And whereas Mrs. Lottie Thomas, Thomas, a teacher in the community, suggested the name of Sharon Baptist Church, because she was familiar with Sharon Baptist Church in Baltimore, Maryland. And whereas the first meeting place of Sharon Baptist Church was the Gallion Fishman Hall, located across from the Old Mount Gene School, services continued there until 19, the 1900s, when the church was built. And whereas the land that the church is built on was purchased from Joe Gunther, who was, who also donated additional land for the church site, and the church was constructed by Jack Swain and his son, with lumber bought in Norfolk, Virginia, and brought by boat to Lancaster and carried to the building site by horse and wagon. And whereas the Reverend Daniel Tucker was the first pastor and served from 1900 until 1922, and the church pastors included the following, Reverends Levi Reese Ball, Daniel Tucker, A. H. Monique, William Seabury, Thomas Sanders, Leon Baylor, Royal Nickens, Winston Tolbert, Norman, Norman Dale, Robert Jeffries, Clarence P. Carter, Dr. Rodney Waller, and the present pastor is Reverend Dale S. Buns, with first later being Reverend Kim Buns. And whereas the present degons are Ervin Brittenhand, Geraldine Carrier, Lord Hill, Marvin Jones, and Diggon Emeritus Joseph Taylor. And the present trustees are Geraldine Avery, Samuel Smile, and Clarence Reed. And whereas Sharon Baptist Church had grown spiritually and significantly over the years, it has a current membership of over 100. And whereas Sharon Baptist Church celebrates many annual events, including the annual homecoming and summer revival that is held on the first Sunday in August. And whereas Sunday, November 30th, Reverend Dr. Rodney D. Waller will be inducted, conducting the anniversary sermon, along with his congregation and choir from the First African Baptist Church in Richmond, Virginia. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Lancaster County Board of Supervisors hereby congratulate Sharon Baptist Church upon its 127th anniversary celebration. It stands all those associated with the church's best wishes as they continue to serve our community.
I move that this resolution be adopted by the board. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously. Okay, so, took care of that consideration docket, salaries and invoices, we don't have that, that'd be coming next month. All right, award of a bid, Taylor Creek Park, Mr. Gill?
Mr. Chairman, we had, on September 9th, we issued an invitation to bid, requesting bids from qualified contractors for the construction of the Taylor Creek Park Public Access Project, which, as you know, consists of an 11-acre site with infrastructure, shoreline improvements, landscaping, and building improvements for a 2/10 of a mile access road with 14 parking spaces, nature and ADA accessible trails, a kayak launch, a public restroom facility, and covered shelters. Bids were due by Halloween of this year at 2:00 PM. Bay Design Group facilitated that. They also put together the bid tabulation on the attachment that you have, and the Franklin Mechanical Contractors Incorporated was the lowest responsible bidder. And this gentleman here, Mr. Ben Burton, looks like he wants to say something, so.
I'm just here for the questions, gentlemen. I'm not going to say anything.
All right, any questions? All right, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, this is in line with our vision here over the past five or six years to expand public access and recreation for campus citizens, so I moved that award of the bid of $1,808,7435 to Franklin Mechanicals be approved.
All right, you've heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion unanimously, okay. All right, motion passed. Thank you, sir.
We'll start on the contract preparation, gentlemen.
All right.
Thank you, Ben.
I'm going to email you what you got. It's all scheduled. All right, P-25 Emergency Communication Radio Project, Mr. Smith, he's online? Oh, he is, right here. He's in person.
Mr. Chairman, before you begin, I've been assured by Mr. Smith that all cumin issues have been followed in both of the consideration dockets, number three and four.
All right, thanks.
All right, so I will start with the federal engineering contract. So this is the same group that we've been with since 2022. We amended in 2023 at the July meeting, that included 24 months in that proposal. Also, part of that was budgeted at $278,000, which we are very well below of, so I don't, I don't believe that this is going to require any funding appropriations based off of what we have right now. So year-to-date, we're only at $47,569 for the total, total contract thus far. But this request is to extend this six months to June of 2026. This will allow us to continue through the finalization of the project, and also, they are going to assist us with our decommissioning of our current system.
Okay, any questions, gentlemen, comments? All right, well, I move that we extend this request to June 30th, 2026. Heard the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. All right, sir, next one?
So the second one I have is for our master
So the second one I have is for our master services agreement with L-3 Harris. So in the, also the 2023 meeting, we approved to, intended to complete this. With that proposal, the only thing, it was at a five-year plan. So I requested that they move our plan to a 10-year plan, just to lock everything in. Because it's 10 to 20-year system, so I felt it was better to do, to just do 10 years of service. So in my memo, I broke it down into monthly payments. Currently, we've been paying between 40 and 40,000, 42,000 each year for our current contract, so this will increase. The first payment, I believe, would be fiscal year 2027, so my intention was to just swap the two contracts and just adjust the budget each year for the, for the services agreement. So this covers everything that we're getting installed now, all of our servicing annually and quarterly, any software updates, stuff like that.
Okay, any questions, gentlemen, statements? Okay, I entertain a motion. What I put, go ahead.
I, well, I do have a question. So just to be clear, so we originally were looking at a 10-year contract, but you're looking to do consecutive 10-year contracts?
No, originally it was five, five-year term.
Okay.
So I think after I talked to you one day, I changed it to 10.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the L-3 Harris 10-year contract.
All right, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Thank you for the job that you do, too.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, any board reports, appointments, whatever? Okay, county administrator report?
Just one quick reminder that your December meeting will be three weeks from tonight, on December the 11th. Previously approved by you all when you had your organizational meeting back in January, I believe, or maybe it was last December, due to the holidays. So December the 11th, Thursday, December the 11th, at 7:00 PM, just a reminder.
Mr. Chairman, I request to close a meeting to discuss acquisition or disposition of real estate and possible legal matters concerning possible litigation.
All right, y'all heard the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. We're now in closed session.